Wait for the signal. Good, go. All right. First of all, I thank everybody for coming. I want to thank the UPD for coming up and discussing this issue regarding gun violence in the city. A lot of the council people have contacted me as chairman of the city of the whole, and obviously there's concerns. The weather's getting better, there's more people on the streets, things of that nature. But what I'd like to do is have UPD make their statements, whatever it takes, 10, 15 minutes, go over what they want to go over, and then we'll have a question and answer period after that. And you could ask the questions that the constituents are asking each council member, and we can get some answers. So what I'm going to do is I hand the floor over to the chief, Chief Williams, and make your presentation, and after that we'll have a question and answer period. Thank you.
Like most people, they're asking what is the police doing about gun violence? And there's a question that we do do for gun violence. One of the programs we belong to is an state-sponsored program from Division of Justice Services called the GID program. It stands for Gun Involved Violence Elimination. We are one of, I believe, seventeen jurisdictions that get state funding for this. And what they basically preach is that's practices evidence-based programs to address gun violence. So rather than the past, when we used to have gun violence, limited target just an area, we now target known gun offenders. So a lot of current intelligence is coming from our law-abiding crime analysis center. So we know who the known gun offenders are. So in this past week, we've seen a rise in gunfire, and we've identified at least three groups that are responsible for the gunfire that we've seen. And they're all, the vast majority are juveniles. They're under the age of eighteen years of age. If you look at their names, we'll look at their names, these are about eighty percent of the people that we recognize in these gangs have been arrested in the past year with possession of handguns back on the street. So we are seeing, based on the criminal reform laws that started in 2017, and again, it carried out into 2019, we are not only statistically seeing a rise in gun violence and violent crime, but it correlates with these criminal reforms that were put in place, like bail reform, discovery, and raise the age. So I'm not a proponent of eliminating S3 criminal justice reforms. I'm in the opinion that need be modified, adjusted. The problem with what happened was when they came out with these criminal reforms back in 2017 and continued on to 2019, is that they never bothered to get the input either of district attorneys, organizations, or law enforcement leaders. Most of this came from downtown New York, and it's not a one-size approach that fits every city. So when we talk about bail reform, one of the big, I think, when we talk about these criminal reforms, just to give you back to that, is that the scales have tipped so far in favor of the criminal now, and they seem like they've forgotten the victim. And what we're seeing is they're demanding also accountability and transparency from police, which they're giving, but at the same time, there's no accountability for these people that are being arrested for a serious crime and back out on the street. So again, I'm not calling for repeal of the criminal reform that we passed, but I would like to just touch upon each and every one of them, starting with bail reform. You know, I agree, bank account balance should not be a deciding factor whether or not a person who's a defendant of case is free, but a defendant who's a threat to public safety should. And it's a problem, because what we're seeing is that these repeat offenders, or these felony offenders, there's little accountability for it. I can give you an example. We had a gun stop about two months ago. One of the persons that was in the car, we found a loaded handgun, was currently out waiting sentencing, and now we catch him with another handgun. So, and then the weaponry that we are coming across, it is scary. We are finding that each and every gun that we are taking off the streets, there are extended magazines, or sometimes what we see are drums. And now what they're starting to attach to these weapons, which is even more scary, is a device called this Sears component, which they get attached to the firing mechanism of a handgun, and make any rifle or handgun, a automatic weapon capable of firing as many as twelve thousand rounds a second. So when we see a shots fired incident in City Utica, when it's not unusual scenes, but these fifteen to twenty shell cases lying in the roadway, the concern about that is that we are finding that most of our offenders are juveniles, they're reckless, and they're the most approved out there. And these bullets, they don't have names. They travel, and they end up in people's windows, their apartments. Thank God, most of the bullets have not hit any people this year at least. But that is one concern with the bail reform. Discovery is another issue. What people don't realize with discovery, you know, we think about guns, they go hand in hand with drugs. When we arrest a felony drug seller, they're giving a per se status. They're not even going to jail, they're giving a per se status. If they're from out of town, it will be lucky if we can find them to get even show up to court. The problem with discovery laws, they demand a barrel information from law enforcement and DA's office in a short period of time. And on top of that, if we fail to provide it in a timely manner, they're going to dismiss these cases. But the problem with discovery when it comes to these drug cases is the fact that all our drug evidence has to be examined and certified by the New York State Police Lab. They're overwhelmed. They don't have enough lab technicians to test everybody's drugs throughout New York State. And we cannot meet the time demands for a lot of these drug cases. So any misdemeanor drug case or low-end felonies, they're not even prosecuted. And again, drugs and guns go hand in hand. The last issue I want to talk about, raise the age, and I think that's the biggest problem we're facing when it comes to raise the age, is that in the past, we'd be able to charge sixteen to seventeen-year-olds with, as adults, and then go through, you know, criminal court like anybody else, and there'd be consequences. Now, what we're seeing is that, I mean, the raise the age legislation, the problem we're having is that judges, when we do charge them as adults, and they go to the adult portion of, the adult portion of New York District Court, the judges do not get a chance to look at the background history of these juveniles, to see if there's a, the repeat offenders or a dangerous society. And because they always go before the judge as the first-time offender, these cases are always kicked back to family court, and they get released, and with little consequences. I mean, I can give you an example. Last year, we had a guy that was shot in the stomach during a robbery, a fifteen-year-old committed. What I found out he got, he got six months probation and house arrest. And on top of it, we just caught him again this year with a loaded handgun at the age of sixteen. So what happens is all these criminal reform laws, they have been put in place, and put a mindset in the mind of many criminals, that there's no accountability for their actions, and they can pretty much do what they want. For law enforcement, it is frustrating. While all these criminal reforms went in place for, they basically favor a lot of the criminal element out there, at the same time, they put a lot of kids reforms in place, restricting things that we can do. And to the credit of the UPD Department and the Sheriff's Department, the violating personnel, we've taken a lot of gun handguns out the street, doing it with a smart approach and making sure we don't violate people's rights. And I'm kind of amazed at the amount of handguns that we've taken out the street. We've taken off a total of seventy-four handguns last year, and we grew up to seven this year. But the amount of weaponry that's out there in the street is mindless, what is out there. And the type of weaponry that's occurring out there. So I guess, I basically close by saying this. I can ask the public, you know, what can we do to help? And I can tell them, the motive that I would tell this council, I need you guys to be advocates to your state elected representatives. I'm not asking to do away with criminal reforms, I'm asking to open up the ideal to modify, adjust these criminal reforms, because they're not working. Gun violence is a statewide issue. I know people focus on the city of Utica. I will tell you this much, if you look at our crime stats, believe it or not, it was a lot less, worse last year. One of the things I'd like to point out is that I did give, one of the handouts I sent to you had to do with confirmed shots fired, and what we looked at was the past five years, in 2017 to 2021. Which is kind of interesting correlation to the criminal reforms, guess what started in 2017? Raise the age for sixteen-year-olds, who no longer charges, charged as adults. 2018, now they included the seventeen-year-olds can no longer be charged with crimes. Now we look at the 2019, and look what happens there. Now that's the gay bail reform and discovery. And then you can see from every year they're on, they're running, confirmed shots fired are going through the roof.
Keep speaking, I'm going to get another.
Yep. Another handout that I sent to you is just looking at this first quarter of this year, 2022, from January to the end of March. If you look at the shots fired calls, actually, last year was horrible. What we put in place at the beginning of January was a crime prevention unit. This is a unit that's made up of Duke Police and Adana County Sheriff's deputies. They have gone up, like I said before, they've done a fantastic job in getting guns out the streets, and you can see as a result, it's why just we had these shots fired policies that are considered, they're worse last year. We, I also have broken down the confirmed shots fired calls compared to last year, and shooting victims. And you can see there's decreases in all those categories.
Well, they just haven't been able to shoot anybody, Chief.
Is that?
They just haven't been able to shoot anybody yet.
Just thank God it was bad news for a while. Another piece of data that I also included in it had to do with overall New York's crime stats. And this came from Division of Criminal Justice Services. So, you know, we talked about the gun violence problems in City Utica, that we also have to put in perspective. This is just not a Utica problem, this is a statewide problem. And you look at the gun data from 2020 to 2021, you can see from January to December, there are significant increases in gunfire, in minor ones, in most of the jurisdictions in New York State. We, believe it or not, had a decrease. And I think a lot of the decrease, again, came as a result of the partnership between the Sheriff's Department and our government prevention unit. Another that's attached is a form, right next to it is UPD Department's, shows shooting instances involving injury, those people hit, individuals killed. We actually saw a decrease in the amount of homicides by shooting this year. We had a total of five. And to the credit of our Criminal Investigation Division, four of the five of those homicides have been solved. The problem we're seeing at these shooting scenes is that most shooting scenes don't willing or cooperative witnesses. And we happen to make these cases based on technology, based on pole cameras, surveillance cameras off of homes and businesses. And to the credit of our Criminal Investigation Division, they have done a phenomenal job in investigating these cases and imposing what they have. But again, you know, when I look at these state statistics, and we look at comparable cities and populations, the only one that's comparable that went actually down further than us was Schenectady. And what they have that we don't have? I did a site visit there. They have over three hundred pole cameras in the city of Schenectady. They are playing a huge role in solving crimes. Right now, I have twenty-six, I think, pole cameras. We are looking to expand that and add to that. So what I am asking this council, and I ask for the citizens of the city, we need help. Police cannot go about this gun problem alone. It's not just a police problem, it's a community problem, and more importantly, if you're looking for ways to help us, you guys have been phenomenal, you've been phenomenal to us. You've given us tools, you've also given us manpower. What we could use in the future, more pole cameras, and on top of that, what we need is that please, preach to your state representatives, there need to be modifications to criminal reform laws. That's all I have.
Anybody else from the UPD, like they had anything? We're going to open it up to a couple of council members if they have any questions. First of all, I do have a question. Repeat offenders, they can't be jailed, they can't, they can't have to post bail, they can't hold them for any reason at all, they just release them back on the street? Is that?
For the most part, that's what we're seeing. Yep. Most of them don't, are qualifying offenses to receive bail. And quite frankly, I think some of these judges don't quite fully understand what the qualifying offenses are. We see some people released that probably shouldn't have been. One of my biggest concerns, what we're seeing with these qualified offenses is that order protection violations, especially the criminal attempts in the first degree. It's, right now, it's nothing more than a worthless piece of paper, because everybody that gets a rank gets released.
Okay, let me ask you a question. So when a juvenile goes to court, his parents may be there, he may have an attorney there, the city has representation there, a police officer is saying, this juvenile committed three burglaries in the last three days or whatever, I recommend that you post bail. Do we do something like that, or are they on their own when they get there?
We have a juvenile investigator that will get input, whether they take our input or not is up to the judge. But you've got to understand, when it comes to a criminal versus a family court issue, it's totally entirely different how a man is treated, even with a serious crime. They're looking to put services in place rather than punitive results. I will tell you this much, we've had juveniles locked up for serious crimes, including attempted murder. And one of the things the state promised us when they said there was going to be raise the age, is that there will be detention facilities for these serious offenders. There aren't any additional detention centers. We can't get people into these detention centers for serious crimes. We had to try to get one in a Buffalo detention facility for attempted murder, and that was not.
Yep, I have one other question. I know the state said they're going to institute the Snug program or something here, and the city of Utica is going to be like the first city, or am I right in saying that?
No, right now, there's currently at least twelve Snug jurisdictions in New York State. Listen, it's a different type of approach to gun violence. These are so-called reformed gang members and criminals that have now moved on beyond their bad past, and are supposed to be basically mentors for those in the community that are the known gun offenders and gang members. So what they'll do is, they're going to work independently in place, but they may want to know from us who the known gang members and gun offenders. And I think will they will be a help to us is that if we have those situations where we behave a crime scene where a shooting just took place. Obviously, there's unrest in that community where that happened. They could potentially be people that are called in, and maybe trying to convince these people to not retaliate, endure retaliation in shooting, but, you know, when I've seen these Snug jurisdictions and programs in place in other jurisdictions, it bests to monitor results. Listen, I'll try anything to see if it works, but, you know, I'll be optimistic, but, you know, from the top of the chief's where they are in place, you know, it's...
Will you be notified, and when? Or do you have any anticipated date that they may be coming in?
Well, it's a good question, because apparently the governor and the commissioner of Division of Criminal Justice Services had a press conference here in University to announce Utica as one of three jurisdictions that was getting Snug. I didn't get invited, neither did the mayor. So I don't know.
So it's, yeah, I understand, okay. All right, I'm done questioning. Anybody else?
I have several questions. Thank you all for coming, I really appreciate it. Chief, thank you for giving us a tour of the UPD facility the other day. It's kind of hard to put all in one breath what you want to do, so I kind of had to put it on a piece of paper to kind of touch on a couple of things that I would like, you know, the city to initiate, the council, and, you know, whatever the administration can do. So I think basically our issues, and everybody has this memo, you got this? Okay. I think everything that you had stated before really touches on the fact of our issues, what Utica faces, and how we'll come together to solve the issues. So I go back and I, I kind of put in different perspectives of community aspects, like mental health, so on and so forth, but the one thing that I didn't touch in here that, and I'll get back to this, I just have a question for you. We mentioned gangs, I mean, we don't really hear about gangs as much anymore as we used to, and I think that the last time that the county had initiated the gang task force was, God, it had to be 2019, or was it even before that? Before that. So, I mean, have we, has there been any discussions? Is this something that, you know, we could look at as a city, or would you prefer to touch on that as a county?
There were two major gangs that actually we took down during wire operations, and again, the Sheriff's Department helped out with that as well. We took two major gun offenders out the street. They were part of these wire operations. On top of that, they had homicide, at the barbershop that was commissioned just the other day. Those were two major gun offenders who were taken out the street. So it's kind of interesting, me and Deputy Chief were talking about this today. What happened is now there's that void, there's those necks in line that want to be the, that's the kingpin in City Utica. And, well, some of these old gun offenders are doing is that they're using the younger gun offenders to carry out their dirty work, because they're underage, and know there's not going to be any serious consequences. And that's what we're starting to see right now. So, and the other thing is that we've got to keep in mind with gun violence, it isn't always about guns and drugs, even though we do see a large majority that is a reason. But we're also seeing people now selling petty disputes with extreme measures. They can be over something in some courses in social media. One was a fifteen-year-old that shot a sixteen-year-old last year because she was interested in his girlfriend.
Well, we've seen that years ago, but, I mean, they were not...
Just to add to that, so with regards to gangs, we have our field intelligence officers who identify the top gun offenders, and the guns and the gangs go hand in hand, right? So when they identify the top gun offenders, we're also identifying who they associate with, and who they associate with typically their gang, right? So we have sort of a roundabout way, we have a gang task force in, in essence with our FIOs and non-identifying gun offenders. That's all down to the primary analysis center, to Lieutenant Fanal, who started early. So we regularly put out details of targeting, for example, top gun offenders, which in turn targets these gangs, because the gangs and the guns go hand in hand off the charts. They're kind of...
Yeah, I get it.
It's not a task force, but that's what they, that's what they do.
All right, cool, thank you. So I want to go back to, so how we can, we can use the community. I found a lot of these initiatives that other municipalities throughout New York State are doing, and I kind of tweet them to our municipality. So, I mean, you could say yes, you could say no, but this is just a memo that I put out, nothing in, nothing in, you know, law or anything like that, it's just maybe that we can kind of tackle this just from my personal perspective. So was neighborhood public safety teams, just explore the efforts of putting together public safety teams throughout our community that can be the eyes and ears to help. I could tell you that that's the majority of the way that I, you know, I know that things go on in the city is neighborhood watching people, not necessarily teams and stuff like that. So maybe working with Craig Grant or something like that, you know, maybe building those neighborhood teams up, those meetings would be something that we could do.
Well, those teams you talked about is basically where they don't have formalized Snug programs in place, and that's what they're basically talking about. When we go about handling our gun violence issue, we don't look at it just from a law enforcement standpoint, we also look at it from a prevention standpoint. So in the past, you know, currently, we use Patrick Johnson, kind of as the liaison between the community and the police. We've used him, to his credit, for a lot of issues that are quality violence in the community. But Patrick's the best, he's the only one person. That's why the Snug program will come in place. But we also do, we also take a proactive approach in other ways. One of the things we do is we do a focused deterrence program where we do custom notifications, we identify who's gun defenders, and we go with Patrick Johnson, who's a police officer, to the houses of the known gun defenders, and try to talk to them, their parents, and say, listen, we identified you as a person that either is going to be shot or is going to be assaulted. And then we try to offer them other ways out of, you know, the gun violence or the game problem that they're in. But unfortunately, most won't take us up any offers. We've also invited people here, well, I shouldn't say invited, they had to come here, they're in probation or parole, where they had to come in for meetings, where we had a mother of a deceased person who was killed by gun violence, we've had clergy here talking to known gun offenders, we've had the mayor, myself, we've had the district attorney, we have the US Securities Office, tell them about what could happen to them. And unfortunately, when we've had those type of meetings, it's... And unfortunately, when we've had those type of meetings, it's no different surgeries to bring these rival gang members together, and all of a sudden, we have to follow out the doors so they don't get in disputes.
Let me ask you a question, is this, does this, does this an initiative?
This is a model program from DCJS.
When, when somebody already commits a crime, or is this prior to them, you see them involved in a gang, like is it, is it more of like a reactive approach, or the approach, how's that working?
Well, listen, it's more of an approach where we, they're under the control of probation or parole, so therefore...
They're already committing a crime.
We compel them to get this meeting. We try to get them out, but again, I mean, we don't see many willing to get out of that lifestyle.
Yeah, and then I guess I'll touch base on that, my point to that once we get a little further. So I, I, another component, and this is obviously looking at, what we could do is creating a quality of life task force, which I know the flooding task force went wonderfully here, so I don't know how far this will bode with the common council, but this task force would include members of UPD, Department of Health, Department of Social Services, as well as mental health experts, and additional city and county leaders as needed. The mission of the task force would be to be providing comprehensive coordinated delivery of needs, city services to areas that have seen a rise in crime and/or deterioration in neighborhoods. And I know when I went and visited the facility, it kinda gave us a little background, so I just, mental health I think is a, is a huge component, not necessarily with, you know, gang-related gun violence, but definitely a huge problem that we're seeing, I think, and I, and I'm taking this as more of a youth approach as well, not just gang bangers, so to speak.
You know, we see mental health really now, I mean, very observant in the situation now with substance abuse, with homelessness, it's very problematic, you know, you talk about trying to handle the homeless problem, but people don't realize there's, there's just more of a problem than just homelessness, which is the substance abuse element there or concern as well as mental health. And we have been working with a person intervention team, which we have one officer who's paired up with a licensed social worker that goes out and they try to do preventative work with people with mental health issues, and try to connect them to, reconnect with the services that they follow out of, so it's a...
It sounds really repetitive, and I know it does, but it's, I don't know, if there's anything that we can do as far as that goes, I'll be more than willing to help.
I appreciate it.
Some of these business leader components do it, actually Mayor Adams from New York City kinda put a lot of these components together, and I thought that they were kind of interesting, so I kind of, you know, geared them towards the city of Utica. One was building a Crime Stoppers partnership, which I know everybody does a fantastic job, and my family law's a board member, so on and so forth, but I thought, you know, getting business leaders and local leaders to get into raising, raising money for that, and maybe upping the funds that we, we could, I think it's up to like fifteen hundred, I think was the answer that I got, and maybe offering a higher incentive to try and get people to come forward, but that one I thought was really interesting, and then maybe get the city to match a goal through ARPA funds or something like that.
So we, we are, and currently the sheriff's department, Rome PD, we're all part of crime established now, the problem is, as you said, is funding. So what we are looking in the future is to help them with fundraisers, and I know last year we gave them a donation, I think somewhere near, was it two thousand dollars?
We paid for some of the services.
Services? I think we gave about three thousand dollars, but basically what they try to run is donations.
Right, and that's why I was like, maybe doing like a partnership, getting community business leaders, I mean, to come in and try and match some of our funds if we can do that as a city, you know, so that, that was something that I thought was pretty interesting that maybe we can go on. Shop safer, I thought that this was a really interesting component, especially knowing that, you know, we use utility poles in order to put cameras up, but this was actually working with local businesses, they provide funding for stores to expand camera technology for their stores, so if the stores agree to place a camera facing, you know, the public sphere, in the event of a crime, these store owners then work closely with local precincts, but they actually work with like the corner stores and stuff like that to put the surveillance code in job, and I know a lot of corner stores already have that, but maybe more up-to-date technology and stuff like that to see if they would be willing to work with a municipality to, to do something like that, and I don't know if you...
You know, it's kinda interesting, you deal with some of these corner stores, some are on the shady end of it.
No.
You're dealing with, you're dealing with synthetic drugs and unclean cigarettes, so they're not gonna want cameras around their cell.
Well, I mean, then can we, can we target, I mean, that's, I mean, that would really no, whoever doesn't want to put a camera up, then we're just gonna put a police car in front of there, or put our own cameras there.
But the, the less shadier ones, we have been trying to encourage them to either upgrade or include cameras in their stores because now it doesn't benefit them, but also benefits us.
But that's what I said, maybe even a matching component of it, I thought it was, I thought it was actually pretty cool.
Yeah, don't you have something like the Ring or something that you utilize as well?
We do, what happens is we became, us and the sheriff's department, we become two and two men years ago, we become part of the system with the Ring, the company Ring. What they do is, they have an app called the Neighborhood App, and you just don't have to be a Ring customer, you can be a customer at any of basically surveillance camera system. And what it does is that you can send alerts out to anybody that's on this neighbors app for video footage, requesting video footage for a crime admitted taking place in your jurisdiction. It's completely voluntary, they don't have to provide it, and, but we do put out those alerts, and one thing I will tell you with, with any type of video surveillance, it's in any case, it's extremely valuable, I mean, there's no question about it. The biggest concerns they've been running to when it comes to video surveillance is whether the quality is gonna be good enough to make some type of identification, whether it's on a vehicle or a person, and...
And the Ring cameras are so, they've gotta be so close to like the actual footage, unless you have the camera, they could go up, up, unchuck, you know what I mean?
Of course, pirates.
Yeah, right, 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 yeah, right.
Anybody else?
Well, I'm not finished, I still want to finish, but I'll let Marco, I'll give up, I'll yield my time for Mark, I guess.
So the question, the question I have is, how many square footage is connected to you know, the square miles, you only have to make sure they have the, could ARPA money be used for cameras, has he checked into that?
I believe the mayor has designated some money from ARPA money for surveillance cameras. Also, there's money right now that was given to us in a grant by Senator Griffield for traditional cameras, but probably been having to install these pole cameras, is that the bureaucracy that we had to go through with National Grid and NRTL to attach a camera on the poles, and it takes a lengthy amount of time, they want to, they can't do any little specs on a camera, they want to know how it's being installed, and by the time we get a camera up, it takes, it can take over a year.
How long does it take to do that?
They, they run into the same problem, but they've gotten to a point now where it's good at it.
Yeah.
They, they got it, right. One point personally to go to, which I think we've gotten to that point now where I think we need to get through the process much better, but it took a while to get there.
I think we have approximately eighty cameras in the queue for the...
And with the city now looking at all these poles in the future, it should make it easier for us to sell cameras as well.
Man, one other question, we've been talking about, there's so many of these corner convenience stores that have no gas pumps, and the best time to, you know, pull them down like in the old days, you know, there was a certain time they would shut down, you know, ten o'clock, whatever. What's the recommendation, because I'm not, you get probably a lot of calls after midnight at these places?
Well, you know, the work, the good thing is the minus one on Roosevelt Drive, stays open twenty-four seven, around the clock, and they got flashing signs.
So I mean, the recommendation, what I'm getting at is, would you recommend for convenience stores on the corner without gas pumps? Gas pumps are a different special category, you could fuel it all, but...
Well, my concern with that is that I will legally not regulate their business, and that's, that's a concern, where I see more and more that's happening, you see these smoke shops popping up all over the city, you know, anything that's through ARPA and other areas, and the reason is, we're hoping for licenses to sell marijuana legally in the future.
Are they opening black cars too?
Walgreens are ready, close to ten.
What?
Walgreens, Walgreens are ready, close to ten.
That's what I'm saying, I mean, so, are the smoke shops opening up late, really late, two, three, four, five?
Well, I, again, when I was about, stays open twenty-four seven.
Is that the only one?
I'm sure there's others, that's the one that comes in.
Okay, that's it.
Yeah, I want to just piggyback off of how we were talking about the cameras with the corner stores, also the idea that we should just, I think, pay attention to is with codes, there's so many codes that we can look to that if they sell, I thought it's like if they sell alcohol, they're not allowed to have their windows covered with certain posters and stack all their product up to the ceiling, and I think paying attention to that visibility part of it too, and tracking down on that would be wise of, I would need to look at, along with the cameras.
I mean, just, so a lot of these stores don't, don't, it's gotten to the point where they've, they've committed violation, or agency violations, they don't sell alcohol, they just continue to find other ways to make money, a lot of it's true.
Let me mention historical, I've seen a, a standpoint, I'll be looking at it.
Yeah, no, I agree, the windows are...
Counselperson, Brad.
I wish we had Mike Mahoney here, because I keep being, I'm still confused about the whole telephone pole issue, because we now own on streetlights, we own the bracket, and we own the light, and the light has a USB port at the top of it, and when we were talked into, I mean, when we were convinced that borrowing eleven and a half million dollars for that new streetlight system, one of the things that we were told at the time was that it had all this kind of options in terms of that plug-in capacity, so I don't understand why we're not buying cameras and putting them on our own lights that we own, and that that would mean not having to go through anybody to get permission to use the poles. And I know we've had this conversation before, I know that that's, I'm not necessarily asking you to answer that question on the spot, I, again, I wish we had Mike Mahoney here. That's why we were told, it was one of the many reasons that borrowing eleven and a half million for the streetlights, it was one of the advantages of them, that they have literally ports on the top that we can add other stuff to. So I don't understand why we're not taking advantage of that. You remember that?
I do.
Yeah.
Right, but you have to screw, you can't screw a utility pole, after, but it rains and then the whole electrical thing's gone.
Well, the camera...
No, these cameras are supposed to plug into the top of the light.
Right, but how are you gonna...
So I, I just, I'm not, I think you are correct, right, that's down the road, that's the plan, but right now, so the cameras we have now are pretty dead, right? So a lot of poles that we're looking to put these cameras on are not those, but going forward, that will be the plan, that's one of the options we discussed when, when talking about going in form of a street.
Right, so why aren't we getting those, let's move forward on getting those lights so that we can get them up on our, on those cameras, so that we can get them up on our lights, so that we can take advantage of this capacity that we were willing to borrow eleven and a half million for. But I have a secondary question.
Yeah, let, let Heather answer that question first, and then we'll go back to you.
So when the project started several years ago, there's been a lot of damage, and so cameras went out, some cameras went out, and we were the positive, we went up, and the same time we were merging two poles and getting started, not totally including the streetlight project, but mostly, I mean, we were probably then, right? They asked my name, two chiefs, the mayor and the IT control, we have to set up a seating and understand how their accounts worked. We went off bid, ended up on a state contract, they haven't ordered, we were, we just probably back, 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 have our now, the ones we've together, we will be in our property same way. But remember, we also have to get that, that's with Google, you can't plug in anything in any time. So there is, there is some bureaucracy that we're involved in, but the parents have to work, I think we actually received all the IT infrastructure that was monitored, there's also a lot of that, I mean, all the cameras are not, we have to have storage and space, right, for all that film, it's all stored, so that's a lot of work, so it's good, we're talking about having, about the price of the income, so it's, it's going to want, there's two consistency, we're not, we're not sure that we're all concerned.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right.
So I just, I want to switch tracks a little bit here, I mean, I, you know, we've all got lots of good ideas and there's a lot of good stuff happening, I worry that we're not doing enough to think about long-term proactive. And what I worry about in this city is that we're not doing enough to provide young kids with healthy, safe activities to do after school. We're doing some of that, people are talking about doing more, PAL, for example, but we don't have community centers in West Utica, we don't have a community center in Cornhill, we no longer have a Boys and Girls Club, we have some things for kids to do after school, but not enough, and it seems to me if we had more helpful activities for kids to do after school, you know, for the eight-year-old, they don't turn into the fifteen-year-old who shoots the sixteen-year-old, because they don't, you know, they don't just hang out on the streets after school. We need to be thinking about long-term investments in healthy activities for our kids so that they don't go down those routes, and I don't see us thinking about that sort of long-term proactive approach enough.
Agreed.
That's not a question, that was more like a statement.
Agreed. I know Counselperson Urban and I had a conversation the other day, and he mentioned, you know, the Johnson Park, maybe having a community center there, and another organization starting up another community center, so that may be the start of things, and maybe the city could help fund it, but you want to speak on that for one second?
Yeah, well, yeah, I am, I was sitting here listening to everybody, and, yeah, there's gonna be two community centers supposedly being built, almost two blocks from one another, and there's no way that these two entities that are looking at building the community centers are ever gonna come together, so we know that already, that it's gonna be two separate ones. One of the problems, and I'm gonna say it, because I always say what I feel, one of the problems I think you got is, when you go in to see kids, you're taking Patrick Johnson with you, and I'll probably get some heat for that. Unfortunately, Patrick Johnson, because he works for the DA's office, is probably one of the most, um, trust the people in the communities where most of the shootings are. It's not just the kids that don't trust him, it's their parents, and that's where you're gonna have a lot of problems. They're not gonna allow their kids to say anything truthful to him, and I love Patrick, I know, I love what he does, I love Roosevelt, I think Roosevelt is very effective, but part of Patrick's problem was, the media painted him as the, a community leader in the black community, and that's been a problem of his for years, that they did that to him, because everybody asked the question, well, who appointed him, and why did they appoint him as the leader of the black community, and why every, every time we look on TV, he's the one that's addressing the shooting problems or the gang problems or whatever, that's a lack of trust with him right now, so my recommendation would be to talk to somebody and find somebody that you might want to take with you differently.
Yeah, the only thing to do to be different is, I, I don't know, I don't think Patrick is still, are new snub still program? Say snub program will actually replace what's, uh, this, I don't know, perhaps draw to the future.
Yeah.
But, you know, again, if you talk about snubbing, you get understanding, they have to work in a, in a place, understand why, because in connection to, or the DA's office, it's not looking at it as trust.
Right.
Right, I mean, the only thing we can do as far as working with snubbing in the future, is if they want to know, you know, who those gun offenders are or those troubled victims, what you want to do is just, it's basically, meet their risk, and possibly connect with it safe, and maybe our duty lay should help find out who those guys are, but the reality, they don't work in the end of the case, because, I don't know if you guys were aware of this, but we do with rocks versus syrup juice or olive, a lot of the snub workers got too close to the place, or perceived to be looking too close to the place, and he got shot. So not, so I understand, well, there has to be separation between the snub and the police.
Right.
But there has to be separation of the masses as well.
Yeah, you're gonna have to, most of the problems with the shootings and the kids that are doing the shooting really has nothing to do with anything that anybody's talked about, it's the deterioration of the family units.
Exactly, it's such a long...
I mean, it's completely the deterioration of the family units, and I tell people all the time, once, unfortunately, the disciplinary rules change nationwide for families, because there's always been a staple in the black family for discipline, to discipline a certain way, and all of us that grew up that way, you don't see any of us, any of us in jail, any of us, any of us ever shooting anybody, stabbing anybody when we was growing up, but now families don't know how to discipline their kids. So you get the older kids in the family that are in the gangs or shooting people, they're just passing that on to the younger kids, and, and it's not the parents that are, they're getting the guns from, it's actually their siblings and their friends that they're getting the guns from, so that's a big problem in the, in the families right now. It doesn't matter what color you are, that's, that's just a problem that, that we have, is the low-income families, mostly, the family structures, there's no, right, family structure anymore, so, you know, it's, it's a big problem.
No, I've been in this job thirty-four years, as I say, as I see generations of the same family, I mean, the, the serious offenses, and I always say this much, we also see gang members encouraging, there are gang members, too many gangs, gang criminal activity, because the family can, it's the same as though.
Yeah.
I just had a recent shooting the other day, there'd be a, a shot started, it's, there'd be a domestic between a mother and her son, the son, I don't know, it was The son, I don't know, we're still, that's it, the son, he's alive, it's something to do with your, uh, with being shot at.
Yeah.
I mean, we're talking, we're talking dysfunctional concerns.
Yeah, it's a problem, the, the Snugs program, I, I like the concept of the Snugs program, but we've done that before, um, in, in a smaller scale.
Smaller scale?
Where we've had, um, you know, we did the gun, um, the, the gang, um, uh, surveys with Steve Darmen. Um, I actually talked to the, to the Asian gangs, which is where my hair is sticking up in the back of my head, you know, 'cause it's, it's very scary talking to gangs and, and people, but it's gonna get crazier as the summer gets, as you know, as it gets warmer. I was talking to some kids the other day, about twenty of them, I'm trying to get them, and I knew they all had guns, but you talk to them and try to talk to them about giving up their guns, they're not gonna do it, because they feel like, um, their lives are at stake if they don't. And I just can't figure out, how does your life get to that point where you're gonna, if you feel like you're gonna give up your guns, you're gonna get killed, or you're gonna get injured, so that's what we gotta work on in the community, and that's a community thing that we gotta do.
What you do to work on, you do, is you find that we have these on, on the streets, you also find this way in the schools.
Right.
So, and vice versa, and that's why it's criminal, and you maintain the relation to school district, because there's intolerance inside the schools, and vice versa, we get a lot of the schools, you know, facilities.
Yeah. But I, I know where you're coming from, when I worked at, um, JCTOD, I lost like ten kids to gun violence, um, over the last, what, twenty years? And three of them were my godson, so I know about the gun violence, and trying to get kids out of it, but they're, and it's just, it's gotta be families that stop this.
You know, they always talk about how you use these kids, and I think by the time you didn't junior in CPR, you lost it already.
Yeah.
You gotta start with.
Yeah, you do.
Really.
The, the kids that I do with the Gun Violence Prevention Program that I do, eighteen to twenty-four-year-olds, and, uh, the state once again set the guidelines for it, and I think that's too old. 'Cause a lot of the younger kids are doing the gun violence now, and the twenty-four-year-olds, you know, they're, eighteen to twenty-four is not really a bad age, I, I don't think we get a lot of kids that are doing shootings. I think it's between the younger kids and the kids over twenty-four, but the state is the one that set the ages, so I don't see none of those kids, unless I go out on the street.
Thank you, but adjusting this program, so you're looking for answers as well, um, I can tell you this now, this one. The Strs B is the fourteen, the sixteen-year-olds.
Yeah.
Those are ones that are trying, that are trying to, um, improve themselves in bad ways.
Yeah.
I mean, you're awesome with these.
Yeah, but I like what the other councilmember said, we gotta find some way with youth centers and other things that are being thought about, you know, to try to get the younger kids before they get too old, because once they get a certain age, you're not gonna get the guns out of their hand. This is, this is gonna be tough.
Agreed, thank you. Uh, anybody else have any other questions?
Yeah, I only had one more thing, and we were talking about education and so on and so forth. What, what happens when they get arrested, like, what is their punishment? Like, there's, there's no, right of reason, I just get released back, there's no, like, educational things that they can take on, there's not, there's no recourse to understanding some of the actions, they can't clean streets, they can't do that, I mean...
I, I can only give some of the examples, we've seen, like, I did that one example of the fifteen-year-old, a shot somewhere, or whatever. Um, and, uh, luckily the victim survived, and, uh, you have to give you six months, house arrest, probation, that is it. And, uh, and then, like I said, you're only gonna catch them, they're only gonna get, again. Um, and, you know, something, I, I gave the other example about the, another individual that was awaiting sentencing for a gun. And, uh, I'm sure you guys can probably give examples as well, I mean, uh, it's, it's basically the difference where these cases are going. And, uh, and what I said, if you look at the homicide, what was used in the homicide, we had a conviction, one of those two persons that were convicted, we caught him with a handgun months earlier, he's out on the street.
Well, they're just setting these kids up for failure, isn't it?
I think family court, you know, they're trying, they do try and manage some type of programming, but it's, it's, uh, I think it's going to be too successful, uh, it's really different.
I would say, how much is my personal assessment?
Alson, then, Hootress.
Yes, uh, chief, earlier we were talking about hoping our elected officials, you know, um, governor and everybody else moderate, moderates the, um, bail reform. Was I wrong in this past week, wasn't Governor, the governor, she's kinda taking a stand on it, where she wants to modify it?
So it's interesting, the ex-governor now is, who's, they used to be the architects of these criminal reforms, now he's saying it's modified, and the current governor is also trying to, at least get a discussion going about modifying the criminal reforms. They are facing spudge resistance.
From Downstate, Downstate. And she's, she's from Upst-
That's an Upstate.
She's, she's from Upstate and she's pushing it, I know that, because she's from the Buffalo area. But, um, piggybacking on what Venice said, um, I totally agree with that, but it's not just at the household. Um, it's even, I mean, when we went to school, I went to Catholic school my whole life, even my friends went to public schools, the teachers, everybody had the right to discipline a person. And the biggest reason, I know me, I was raised without a father, and my mother, my mother was very strict and did the best she could with me, but the biggest reason I never got in trouble was because I didn't wanna disappoint her, or I was afraid, or there was fear. There's no fear anymore today. The parents can't discipline, the teacher can't discipline, the, the, I gotta be honest with you, the worst two jobs that you could possibly have today is a schoolteacher and a police officer, because they get no respect. They get no respect whatsoever, they can tell you to do whatever you want, and they have no authority to discipline the child. That's just my opinion, and there's no, I mean, people, like, we can have, to me, I'm all for the community centers for all the kids and all that, but when the kid goes home from that community center, if he doesn't have a mother or a father there or help, it's, it's nice that we occupied him for three or four hours, but until we have that respect, that discipline, the, uh, just the whole values all the way around are just different to it, it's, you know, and it's just, there's no, there's no repercussion. They know you can't get in trouble, I mean, anything goes, you can go to school, you can tell the, you can tell the teacher to, whatever, and what's gonna happen to him, you know, I mean, he's gonna go, you know, I can remember going home when the nun was gonna call my house, I'm talking like my mother, so they didn't, you know, didn't, she didn't know, because if I was right or wrong, I was disciplined to the max, you know, and, and, uh, things are just different in our country today, in our world, and, and I, it's, it's a terrible thing, and it just, until somebody steps up and changes things, it's gonna just get worse, so.
I think city, city, uh, walls and values and children, and we have a dangerous section of law, it's about, when we grew up, we truly had neighborhoods.
Right.
Neighbors watched out for each other.
Right, right.
It doesn't happen.
Right, no.
Now it's territories.
Can I, can I just say one thing?
Yes, and then I'm gonna, I'm gonna wrap this up, 'cause we do have some legislation we have to go over.
Just one big thing that has changed since you and I were kids, and I don't, I'm not gonna tell you the numbers, there are simply far, far, far more guns in America than there were forty years ago when we were kids. There are now, I don't know, three guns for every American inside the country, something like that. Uh, don't hold me to that number, but that has changed a lot since we were children, the gun, and, you know, and we do a lot to take them off the streets in various ways, and of course, one of the things that happens is that back, they go right back up, 'cause there are just so many guns in the world, so.
Well, I'll rebuttal on that, too.
More responsible gun owners.
So, so there might, there might be a lot more guns, and I assure you that is a problem, but guess what? When we were a kid, you got in trouble if you had a jackknife, or you got in trouble if you had a knife.
I'm not denying your saying.
The bottom line is, you think, you were disciplined by your family.
It starts with the home, I understand.
I wasn't denying what you said, I was.
All right, we're gonna end that discussion.
Yep.
I, I wanna thank Kevin Reger from Nata County, the sheriff, the undersheriff here, you wanna add anything to this, or any comment? Before you leave, I know you've been listening to it all, you've been through it all, you've seen it all.
Exactly, I mean, just first and foremost, I just wanna thank Chief Williams, I mean, the, the relationship between the sheriff's office and the youth police department has never been to the level that it has been in the past decade or so. We just continue to build and build and build and build. Um, you know, our, our deputies really enjoy coming into the city, it's not, it's dangerous work, but they like working side by side with, with the Utica Police Officers, we're making a difference. Um, I think yesterday we ran the numbers, we were in, in, just, uh, last year alone, I think it was about a hundred and seventy-eight days, we were in Utica with at least one or two deputies, um, working with, with them on, on the give detail, and, um, you know, we're, we're glad to be able to do that. Um, as you know, the centralized arraignments, every initial arraignment for any arrest in the county is done at the jail now under centralized arraignment process, so we see it every day, the undersheriff and I, we see people coming in, we see the, the, from all agencies, I mean, it is, is just, it is deplorable that we are allowing people to walk out of, out of, out of our court every single day where they should be held, um, and it, it's scary, I mean, it, it's not a gun crime, crime case, but one that, that I just cannot get out of my mind, it happened in a, in an adjoining town to the city, um, on a domestic issue. An individual held a machete to his significant other's throat, okay? He was charged with criminal possession of a weapon, which is a non, uh, a, a, a qualifying offense for bail, all right? And he was also charged with, uh, there was a second charge, the weapon and menacing, which is also non-qualifying for bail. That individual got to go home while the victim of that crime, the victim of that crime had to go to a shelter, because they couldn't go back home out of fear for their life, um, you know, and, and again, and, but I, I think our, our biggest struggle, when I say our, the community, we've gotta figure out how to do two things at once. I wholeheartedly agree that we need places for young kids to go, positive places to, to, to instill in them positive things, but at the same time, we have to deal with the issue at hand, the shootings that are happening every single day, you know, so it's, but, but unfortunately, I think more so in the state of New York than other parts of the country, we can't walk and chew gum at the same time for some reason. And it's very frustrating, I mean, we have juveniles in Westchester, we have them in Erie, we have them in Monroe, we're, we're lucky if we can hit a vet in Syracuse when we need one, and these are for the worst of the worst, but, um, I, I mean, it's just, it's, there's no place to put these kids, um, you know, the governor, I, I could bounce all over here, the governor's ten-point plan, it's in, it's moving in the right direction, but it's nowhere near, near where it needs to be. I mean, I think the biggest thing for the city of Utica, at least, her point one or the ten-point plan talks about, gun offenses would be bailable, so that's a positive step. Um, the problem is it doesn't address a lot of other things, and, and the holdup is within the Democratic Party itself and the state, that's why the budget's not passed, it's because of bail reform, which is good, because they're talking about it, but unfortunately, um, there's more that favor bail reform the way it is than those who, I mean, our proposal is to make it simplified, the whole damn thing. Throw it all out, give judges discretion to measure a person's dangerousness. If you, if a judge says this person's dangerous to their family or their community, then you put bail on them. If the judge crosses the line, then they should be held accountable, you know, so it, it's just, we've made this so complicated when it doesn't have to. And, and it's just, you know, my fear is for the people on the front line, I mean, they're, they're dealing with this every single day, it's just, it's scary, it's, it's scary.
You've been an innocent bystander as well.
Same as Chief Williams, I'm, I'll be, I'll be on my thirty-fifth year in December, and I've never seen it like this, I have, I've never seen it like this.
Out of control.
It's out of control, losing, totally out of control.
One last question, and we're gonna call it quits.
Does the federal government set bail when people are arrested on federal crimes?
They do, and the interesting thing, if we can follow the federal government, someone is charged federally, that's why you'll notice, we didn't even get into talking with, about that, some of the more serious crimes, people, we're now reaching out to federal prosecutors, 'cause if they charge them federally, they put bail on them immediately, and then, then they hold a hearing within, within forty-eight hours or something to determine if that bail needs to be changed or dropped. So a federal judge can, can measure someone's dangerousness, but in, in state, they can't.
My second question is, in states that haven't done anything like bail reform, like, haven't done it, aren't thinking about repealing it, their all, their gun, I'm not gonna ask it as a question, it's rhetorical, their gun violence is up and their homicides are up.
I don't understand, I mean.
It is, but I do. So in states that haven't had anything like bail reform, that we've had here in New York State, gun violence is up and homicides are up.
Okay, is there any, anything else, chief? I thank you for, thank you for coming tonight and at least starting the discussion. I, uh, I'm going to see if we can get some money for some pole cameras, and I got my notes here, and see if we can reach out some state, state officials, that maybe we could, uh, help you out and, and, and straighten out some of these bail laws. Um, that's the best we could do for you, but, uh, I appreciate it.
If you could just give some recommendations to them, put a resolution forward, and send them letters every time they just had fire.
Thank you, thanks, thanks, everyone. Council will take five minutes, and then we'll re-meet, and we'll discuss, uh, committee alone.
I would like to discuss this at our next, the committee of the whole, at the next council meeting. So is that the 20th? Yes. So on the 20th, I'd like to have committee of the, committee of the whole meeting about that ordinance, and I'm gonna bring in a guest. From another city, we have a similar law, and they find it pretty tricky.
Okay, I'll notify the clerk, and we'll, we'll make time for that.
Thank you.
We'll set the time, so it may not be 4:30, we may change it to 5:00, we'll see. See how much we have in the committee. All right, ordinance number nine, adding Article Four firearm shooting ranges. Anybody want to discuss that?
I would like to, I have a few small amendments that I'm gonna propose to that tonight. They're pretty simple. So in the, in the first whereas, it currently says, there is presently no legislation regulation of the. I would want it to say, whereas there is presently no legislation regulating the establishment of.
Okay, is the clerk aware of that at all?
Yeah, I'm gonna give her a piece of pa, I gave her a paper that lists all this.
Okay.
Yeah. So that's the first, and then the second is under definitions on the first page. I want it to read a handgun, rifle, or shotgun, with the latter three as they are defined. But I'm taking out or airgun. Putting or before the shotgun, taking out the airgun thing.
Okay.
Okay? The, I want to remove paragraph B under section two dash 1761. That's at the top of the second page. That's the one about the planning board. And then on the same page, under two dash 1763, I want to remove paragraph E. Again, all of these I've listed on a document for the clerk.
Okay.
So now, can I make all those amendments in one motion?
No, it's an order.
I don't believe you can.
Okay.
You have to do them separately.
Okay, so each one separately.
Yeah, and then what we'll do is, we'll bring it out on the floor, we'll amend it, and if you want to bring it to vote tonight, anybody have any other, any issues with this piece of legislation?
The only question that I have is that if you're taking out section B of it, then who does this go in front of as far as?
Counsel.
No, I'll let, I'll let the judge go.
The police chief.
The counsel.
Right, but then what's the, how do you?
I talked.
Did you, did you incorporate those, the two that Mr. DeGiorgio wanted?
Yes, that was the removal of the paragraph B on the top of the page.
I was reading something, and I didn't catch when you did that.
Yes.
You did that, okay.
Yep, this, this takes care of what Corporation Council wanted, and also, I don't think that there's a police representative here, but the chief did say he's good with this.
If he happens to...
The chief, the police chief is good with this at this point. Some of those changes are at his recommendation.
Okay. Counselperson classmate, you had something?
The only thing that I guess, if, if you're taking that special permit out, then section two dash seven eight already regulates a majority of what you, of what you're instituting. The whole point was the, of this legislation, I believe, would be the special permit, so that whether the chief of police approves it or not, it still should go in front of a designating body in order to approve where it should be and what the conformity of it all should be. So I guess the, to me, the, the section B made the most sense if you were gonna pass it, because if you take it out, there is no second component to the, other than the police, the chief, police, the chief of police being able to approve it.
Right. And what's problematic about just the chief of police issues these licenses?
Well, because then where do you go in front of the zoning code? Where do you go in front of the planning board? Who regulates where, where the firearms could go and stuff like that?
This is part of the reason that, that Corporation Council was happy taking this out. There's already something in the zoning code that says indoor sports util, uh, sports facilities. So that's already would determine where in the city these can go. This is just gonna break, is just gonna have to do with how they have to operate and function. So there's already something in the zoning code that determines where you can place these.
Right, so I guess then, what's, what difference, so what difference does this make than what is actually passed with the state that Mr. Ziggarelli came in and explained to us?
Yeah, the state, we've done, I've done a lot of research on this, the, the state doesn't have any laws that regulate shooting ranges. So there's no state...
I don't believe that, that to be true. I mean, I, cause I can actually pull up a zoning code. I, I mean, that's, that's, I, I mean, unless you want to make a more stringent code than what the state has, and what regulations that you would have to follow, then, then that would be the only...
If you can find us the state regulations on a, on an indoor firing range.
Sure, I think, I think Mr. Ziggarelli explained it too, that he could. The fact that there has been some inside the city before. I mean, I, I, that would be my only objection to that, but, I mean, if you want to pass it tonight, go ahead.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, if Corporation Council does come in, that'd be a question we could ask Corporation Council, once they do come, if they're gonna be here tonight. Yeah, if they said they were good with it, I'm okay with it, but if she wants to ask, she could ask. Uh, let's see. Up next.
Patricia Jean Zajak.
Resolution number 11.
Number 11, request the district council to allocate funding...
These are mine, Frank.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's Sam.
To establish a business directly app.
I'm, I'm just waiting for him, he's putting stuff together, he said he'll give it to us.
All right. And resolution number two, honoring the life of Patricia Jean Zajak.
I'd like to make an amendment, floor of the committee.
Yeah, he's got a one liner, he wants to change, because one person didn't pass away, and it sounds like he did, but I'm just gonna make an amendment on the floor.
Okay, he will amend it on the floor, is, is the clerk aware of what you want to change?
She gave me the new, the line.
Okay, so she made the change, or you're gonna read it on? All right.
She doesn't live in my district anymore. This was over Francis Street.
Francis Street.
So why don't we have Katie, co-sponsor, would you?
I believe it's Katie, but I don't mind taking care of it. That's what I'm saying.
We'll give you the credit.
I just wanted to let you know.
Okay, so it'll be coming out, it'll be coming out today. Okay, and then the bond ordinance, that's something we want to discuss?
Yeah, there was a few amendments, the amendments that we were given to us in our pre-meeting conference paperwork, let's see, it says control right on top. There is two additions and one subtraction. The addition was building reconstruction, station one, 115,000. Building reconstruction, station four, 285,000, that was added. And the removal of 300,000 for a generator. That was removed to compensate for those two expenses. It only increased our total of debt for this bonding series for 100,000 dollars. Any questions Heather probably will answer for you.
Um, without, Heather, without me digging through my paperwork, so now we're, it's five police utility interceptors, wasn't it seven before?
Two are being paid for by our...
Oh, okay.
One thing I just wanted to mention, I didn't realize that you did pass the secret at your last meeting, I thought it was just in committee of the whole, but you went ahead and passed it, that has to be passed again with the addition or the change.
Okay, so, okay, let's do it this way, though, that secret has to be passed, um, that, that piece of legislation, we would have to rescind the one that we had, we, we have to rescind the one that we did on the last council meeting and replace it with the one in our package. Is the council okay with that? Everybody good? Al, go walk through that one.
Okay, we have, we have new legislation drawn up, we're just gonna replace it.
We're gonna re, yeah, we'll rescind it, yeah, we're gonna rescind the one in committee and replace it. Well, this is just the insert part, it's not the complete legislation, so, all right?
Gotcha. Anything else?
Thank you very much for that.
Anything else?
Yes.
With that bond ordinance, we're gonna get some of those private apartments repaired, buildings, go ahead.
Mr. President, can I just ask one question?
Um, she was, the thirteenth was, next week was a day they could have, but it's a bad week. People are going away and stuff. So, is anybody interested if I could set something up? I wanted to try to set it up like before our council meeting at four, so we're not coming all over the place. But if we're not interested, it's no big deal to me.
I saw it on WKTV, they gave a nice little presentation, and walked, held something, we was walking around.
Yeah, so I mean, are you guys interested in doing that, or you're not? No? Uh, walk, taking a walk through the hospital? Thomas, if you're interested, if I can go and set it up?
We're going to, we're going to, we're going to send anything to you, do you want to move on?
Well, I was just going to take us as the council before one of our meetings. I thought it might be a nice idea.
Just to be honest, I know you have questions to hear about that.
Okay. I'm trying to do what I can.
Roll or escape or?
I mean, I can be honest with you, I, last week I ended up calling to the police station, and I couldn't go to the other places I happen to provide to the police station. It was, I'm so glad I did that, because I never had, never had an idea. I have a hobby, I'm a caregiver now. Um, I never, never, I didn't, never knew what was in the police station beside, you know, all the stuff they did.
You guys from the courtroom?
All right, thank you.
James.
Why, they don't put it over here.
It's still a secret.
Okay. Are we done?
Frank, would you like to throw this committee in, also, in a couple of minutes, we can do the pre, uh, pre-council meeting?
I'm done.
Everybody good?
Everybody good.
Just a couple of minutes, and we'll start yelling in the, five after six. Is everybody okay with that?
Six oh five is good, thank you.
Is he a resident of the city of Utica?
Yes. He's a resident of Kensington Drive.
Wasn't a resident there, so I'm just... Using that as an address or is that permanent residence?
No, that's where he lives.
Can we verify that before we approve it? I mean Frank, we're regulating people that are employees of the city to live in Utica in order to be appointed to a board. So I just want to make sure that the people that we're appointing are too.
Yeah, I'll look it up in my most recent voter rolls while we're doing this, before we get...
Well, anybody can have a vote, you can be registered to vote anywhere in the state. If I wanted to vote in Marcy, I could vote in Marcy. I'd just choose to vote in Utica if I had a residence there. I just want to make sure that if we're appointing people that their permanent residence is in the city. That's all.
Okay, we can check that after to make sure that they're... Secondly, the only problem is that it says replacing Joseph B. Home. This is reappointment, so the language is incorrect, isn't it? Would you like to make an amendment and we can probably clarify and check his residence, please, for us? And we'll get both questions answered, if you don't mind.
Can I just ask what's gonna, what's gonna count as, what's gonna satisfy that he's a permanent resident?
Over registration, please.
Okay.
All right.
Driver's license, copy of driver's license.
Our next piece of, she probably got, she's probably got a copy of this license in there usually. All right. Our, our next piece of legislation, council members, if we'd like to move on. We've got two questions. Celeste Front probably brings it to the table on the prior piece. Our next piece of legislation is Commissioner Deed, Deedah Rosa. On the Zuch, Zucher place, sixteen oh one. Any questions on this Commissioner Deed's appointment? Okay, very good. Let's get to the next piece. Okay, we have two pieces of property. We have properties for sale, eight oh four, eight oh six John Street. This was for a five hundred dollar price. Councilman Beatrice says he wasn't there at Urberville Knoll. But Bobby Burmaster, Councilman Burmaster was. Are you good with this, Mr. Burmaster? Okay.
Councilman Miola, I'm sorry, we have to go back to the Commissioner of Deeds. The ending should be the December thirty first, two thousand twenty-three.
That is also correct. And how can we have a term?
Oh yeah, because it doesn't, it only, it only starts now.
No, you're right. I corrected that. Samantha, you're right.
Just two thousand twenty-three.
No, it's not twenty-three, it's twenty-two. All Commissioner Deed's at the same time.
Yeah. I, I'm sorry, that's really loud. I confirmed it with the county and they said they all expire on even years.
Right. Can't be an odd year.
Oh, that's right, because then we would be an extended...
Yeah.
Yes, okay, I'm sorry, that was a, that was a marriage, that was a marriage officer.
All right. Councilman Burmaster, are you okay with this piece of legislation? All right, first piece of legislation, which is number three, that needs to vote. That is a public hearing. The second piece goes into committee. Is everybody okay with that? Any opposed? Very good. Of course, this next piece of legislation is for five thirteen Bacon Street for an amount of twenty-seven thousand dollars, sale through Urberville Knoll. Bacon Street, five thirteen. Is that the first district? It's gotta be... Councilman Beatrice, you're okay with the sale?
Yeah.
Okay. Of course, the first piece of legislation is the public hearing and the second piece goes into committee. Our next piece is Proposition Resolution number seven is for the sale of four fifty-six Saratoga Street. This sale is for one dollar. Councilman Burmaster? Nine fifty, okay. Nine fifty, I'm sorry. Nine fifty-six Saratoga Street. This property is for sale for a dollar. I did speak to Councilman Burmaster for it. He does have a reason for this. Councilman Burmaster, would you tell the rest of the council?
Evidently this person, and, and they sold it back though...
Could you speak it to the microphone, please?
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
They sold it back to him for a dollar, but he's gotta pay all the fees for permits and taxes to bring everything up to date before he gets...
Ownership.
Ownership of this piece of property. And that's why the dollar was involved.
Any questions for the sale? Very good. First piece is the calling for a public hearing, number seven. And number eight needs to be referred to committee. Our next piece of legislation, resolution number nine, it's calling for a wine and beer permit for American Legion Post two twenty-nine in Herkimer Road. Any discussion on this piece of legislation? Very good. Discussion is closed. We'll take a, take a vote on it. This next piece of legislation is ordinance number ten. No parking, Rosemont Place, north side between Mohawk and Clementson. I had a constituent who was complaining about a person parking on that side of the street. Took the opportunity to look in our city code and it was missing. So we implemented, the signs are there. And we're going to put up this legislation to make it enforceable. And all she wanted was a sign erected in front of her house to make sure that people don't park on her side of the street. So, any opposed to this legislation? Very good. We'll call for a vote. Our next piece of legislation was a nice woman that both Mark and I had the privilege to talk to that's looking to continue her efforts to be a marriage officer. Any discussions? Discussion's closed. We'll move to vote. Our next piece of legislation is a sidewalk program, which I do have to give credit to our Councilwoman Celeste Front. She was able to negotiate an upper fee for more contributions for the city. Celeste, would you take the floor and give us a summary here of how you did this?
It's just very simple that we haven't raised the sidewalk fee since two thousand and six. Of course, inflation being what it is, especially with concrete. I just thought that we, I don't want to, I want us to be able to encourage people to take advantage of the city sidewalk program as much as possible. So we're gonna raise it to eight bucks a square foot.
So how were you able to persuade the mayor to change this line? Heather, Heather?
The mayor was looking to do it prior to the budget. And the budget just became overwhelming at one point, so we kind of put it to the side knowing that nothing would be done until a winter. But I am preparing a memo, councilperson Tess reached out to me wanting to know the actual numbers, what the budget versus what actually is to pay. As you may recall, we actually pay a portion that is within the CBVG area. A portion is paid out of CBVG, but outside the CBVG area, it comes out of the Javelin. So Amy here has just put some numbers together, which I'm gonna put in the memo so that we'll be ready to vote on it in two weeks, hopefully. You'll have all the data there to back that up.
The amount?
Yep.
And the budget amendment?
Yep.
Okay. Would the council like a full sponsorship of this? This is good for, Samantha, you have the floor?
And I just wanted to clarify, the only reason why I did ask for the numbers, because if you increase one budget line, I just wanted to make sure that we increased the utilization so that people weren't left out of getting that actual sidewalk program. But it was underutilized for the most part, so bringing it up to that eight dollars wasn't a big deal and we didn't have to adjust that other part of the budget.
Right. Which is actually a reason that I'd really love it if we could vote on this tonight, because this is exactly the time of year when people are gonna be going for this.
It is an ordinance and it needs unanimous?
Right.
Would the full council like to sponsor this?
Sure.
Everybody good?
Everybody's good.
Clerk, would you please put full council on this? Okay, ordinance number twelve, calling for a vote. Our next piece of legislation is the solid waste extension agreement between the city of Utica and Oneida County Herkimer Solid Waste Management Authority. This was done prior for twenty-five years. And from March thirty-first going forward, the extension is ten years. In addition to that, I don't know if our clerk had a chance to send a memo out, because Mr. Rabia would like to discuss a increase in fees to our next council meeting. Did you have the opportunity to send that memo out?
Yes, I did.
Thank you very much. So if, if there's any questions on the next piece of legislation that he's going to be requesting increase of fees, this is, but the one in front of us is simply just an agreement of an extension that the county waste authority and the city have together. This is a resolution, I think. Does the majority of council okay with this?
Can we wait till Mr. Rabia gets here? Or is this time sensitive?
This is just an extension for the agreement, not the...
See, if you want, no, I'm just saying, if there's anything else that he wanted to add to it, maybe just keeping the agreement until he gets here.
He's the one that brought this agreement to it.
No, I know, but if he's talking about fee increases and stuff like that, why not just wait to see?
That's gonna be a totally separate resolution. And he does want the agreement to get taken care of, because they need to put their bids out.
Right, because we're already late, we're after March thirty-first.
Bids up, yes.
I didn't know it was a negotiation, it's already part of that.
So it is a resolution and we will bring it to vote. Okay. Our next piece of legislation, this, the rest of pieces of legislation, of course, there's going to be a motion to waive the Thursday rule. Anybody oppose the waiting Thursday rule for the rest of the legislations? Councilman Frank will make that request at the beginning of the meeting. This is the ordinance for moratorium extension. Now, I don't wanna yell at Brian too much, but I am going to yell at him. So, Brian?
I'm not sure why you yelled at me. A few weeks ago, I asked council to provide me what you wanted to see as changes.
Nobody, nobody sent you anything?
I have never seen anything.
Then please accept my apologies. Council members, we have less than six months. I know, first off, Brian, one of the amendments Mark Williamson would like, also in the legislation to shut the businesses down at ten o'clock. The one that myself and Mr. Beatrice would like is the two hun, two thousand foot marker between them.
Let's lower it. Let's do fifteen hundred.
Huh?
Let's do fifteen hundred.
Nah, two thousand was the old legislation.
Trust me, it was, it made it from, it made it from the corner of St. Anthony's to the corner of Brunters Street.
You mean fifteen thousand you want?
No, fifteen hundred.
Oh, fifteen hundred, you want less? Okay, I'm good with that.
Just because if you look at it from one block to another, it's really not that far.
So we have two proposed amendments. One was the fifteen hundred distance. The second was to shut the stores down at ten o'clock. Of course, the ones without gas pumps.
Can we, can we do anything?
He wants us to put it in writing for you.
Yes, it will need to be in writing and you could do it as a resolution, because it's gonna have to go to planning board.
You want us to do it as a resolution for a law?
Well, we already used to have it as a law that you had to shut down.
Yes.
They changed that. So that was already regulated for the, for the, under our, under our city code for that they had to shut the convenience stores down at a certain...
I mean, the judge had some proposed ones that we, that we put in committee, two on a prior, if you look back in, I think, December, I think, or November last year, we did have two or three pieces of legislation that the judge did write.
So my recommendation is to prepare a resolution that council wants certain changes reviewed by the planning board and whether that's either just a bullet points of what they want us to, to look at and consider, because they will need to be reviewed legally. Or if you have the actual, you know, ordinance or proposed piece of legislation to review that as well. But we're gonna need something in writing, because then, like I said, it's gonna have to go to planning board. Planning board's gonna have to hold their public hearing on it, make their recommendation, then it goes, then it comes back to council.
Councilman Miola, we regulate laws though, so that's what I'm confused about. If we put a law in that states that the convenience stores have to shut down at ten o'clock, it doesn't need to be by way of resolution?
No, it, she's talking about the process of changing the ordinance.
Right, but we're talking about all convenience stores, not the ones moving forward. You're just talking about future applications, which if there's a moratorium, you really wouldn't need that in there unless you talked about future...
Well, we can't keep this moratorium going for over a year, that's why we're trying to...
Fifteen years?
We wish we could. So, Samantha, that's good. So, go ahead, Councilman DeBrangio.
Obviously, we should put it in committee. There's no hurry, we already have one on the books.
No, we need the extension.
We need it right away, or can we wait two weeks?
No.
Let him review it a little bit further?
No, we need the extension right now.
Okay, so the extension is fine? But the time, you're concerned about the time?
It gives us time to make the changes, correct?
Well, Frank, my only, I don't, I don't know if you got my email. There's a couple concerns with the actual...
Yes.
...ordinance, because it's not gonna do what you want it to do.
The one that you wrote?
No, 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 the one that I wrote previously for the law.
You mean the local law?
Yes, is what it needs to be. If you want it, yeah.
So this is good?
The local law is fine, whatever, if the language you use from that, yeah.
Okay. All right, so we're good with this? We can move it? Number fourteen, anybody opposed?
Do you have nine votes to support this?
Actually, no, actually, this is an ordinance and it needs unanimous.
No, I want to sponsor it.
Okay.
I'm just saying, like, if they don't, if we make a law and somebody doesn't like it, it's their right to challenge it. I mean, I'm tired of the...
We want to put in our codes department, Samantha, we, of course, you want laws that can hold up, especially in codes. Okay, so is this unanimous? Everybody good with this? Oh, I'm sorry, Celeste.
I just wanted, about the, the memo that we're gonna send to the commissioner, can we also address in that the idea of like the window, like not being able to see into a store seems like a problem?
That's a color safety thing.
Yeah, and not being able to see through, so that people can be doing whatever they want in there, because we can't see into it.
Again, you can, I mean, you can make the recommendations that you want to do. I would assume you should share it with Judge Guaramone to have him look at it, because there are some things that if you recommend that may not be legally possible. And then planning board's gonna review it and then make the recommendation, then you can go for it. So you can regulate how you want to regulate. I'm just making the reference that if there's things that are legal or illegal, you may want to have Judge Guaramone and/or myself be reviewing.
And I believe, Councilwoman, your issue is already addressed in the sign section of the ordinance. But I have to...
Yeah.
But for example, like Celeste Front's shooting range legislation, right? She's regulating something outside of the zoning code. So that's what I'm confused about. If this legislation's okay to zone, to regulate a shooting range, why isn't it okay for us to pass legislation under an ordinance or way of law, by ever, to regulate a convenience store?
I believe, I believe the convenience store stuff currently is all under the zoning code, which is why...
They changed it. It was originally under city code, and I wish that when they passed the new zoning law, they actually added the old section of the city code to the new zoning law, which they didn't, which hence the reason why we're in part of the problem that they did. It wasn't anybody's fault, it just kind of bypassed it. But does that make sense? You can regulate a shooting range, but we should be able, we should be able to regulate a convenience store? Not by way of...
The regular code. Not by way of the planning, yes. That does make sense.
Well, we do have a couple pieces of legislation that, after we voted on the moratorium, we're gonna bring, we're gonna bring those to the table. We're gonna get those to the planning board to start with, so we can start this action and motion. In addition to that, we'll also put the ten, ten, ten o'clock closure of legislation to there and we'll make sure that... Is there any other points that the council wants to bring to the table while we're still here, discussing this? Other than the old...
Well, I mean, I suppose we still have time to talk about the details of this. I like the idea of like, they have this one on Roosevelt today, building twenty-fourth app, and that's crazy. I like the idea of closing hours. I think in the summertime, shop lot seems a little early. I mean, do you have me? But I like the idea in general that we would have closing hours.
What I think we should do is also have opening hours, just to throw it in there, six AM, seven AM, whatever it may be. That's all. Close between ten PM and six AM or something.
Otherwise, you can open up one in the morning.
So, so I'm just gonna give this frame of reference. I haven't done any research on it, but you, when you start regulating certain things, you're infringing on certain rights that individuals have. So I'd be close with how much you regulate specific things about opening businesses, closing times, because you're gonna start pushing...
The limit.
Those limits, so...
Once you get into controlling the internal operations of a business, you're overstepping your legal authority.
So we may, there may be some specific things you may be able to control, like the times that certain lights are out and how, you know, things of that nature, but times, you're getting a little...
Tightly.
Yeah.
Can I, that actually, I'm glad you said that, because that also reminds me, one of the real problems with the smoke shops from my point of view is how brightly lit they are. And it's everywhere. You drive through Waterville and the, the smoke shop there is like you could read a book in front of it at night, right? There's this way, they all seem to have...
Attention grabbing, yes.
They all seem to have similar, kind of like this, it's like in a tube or something and it's, it's super bright. And I would love it if we could make them lower those lights.
Just, to that point though, just understand that for codes to follow up on a complaint, if you regulate it and you set certain limits, they have to be enforceable, which means codes would have to, A, be present at night when they're not working, and B, have a way to measure it, which I don't believe that anybody in the building has a light meter, so...
So let me ask you a question. How did you regulate certain lights and signage when you did the design guidelines for everything else? Could it just be for new structures that you implement design guidelines based on opening up a smoke shop or any future ones? Because I mean, we, I know we've done design guidelines for, so if we put legislation in there, they've been a...
We have, but it's more, design guidelines are based more on architecture, architectural styles...
But you still regulate them.
For new construction.
But we still put them on old construction. I know we have.
It's difficult to do design guidelines for a building that's already built and has been here for a hundred years.
Like no signage, no banners, things like that.
Package. I'd like to get a consensus of the council. Is everybody okay with voting on the bond coming out, first time out? It is an ordinance. We can be unanimous and move it forward? And we send the one in committee, or we can amend the one in committee?
I don't mind it coming out. The only thing that I discussed with Heather was, I mean, I would have liked to use this for a little more leverage, but unfortunately, I understand the time constraints on it and I wouldn't keep these projects up with that. The only thing that I will mention, and we've discussed this, is that I'm not too keen on the Roscoe, Conkling Park, ARPA funding, nor with the Harbor Point Athletic Field. Not saying that those funds shouldn't go towards that. I would just like to see a little more concrete plan in regards to that. However, I think if you just want to touch on what we've talked about to maybe coming in June and going from there.
Yes, I spoke, I spoke with the mayor today about your request. We haven't really had a chance to brief many of the council people on where we are here today on some of these projects. The mayor agrees that we should inform you, and so we're gonna be working over the next sixty days to prepare something. He would like to actually meet with you, similar to what we did before, because there's so many individual questions, it makes it difficult to come down here on the floor. So Sonny will be reaching out to you probably right after Memorial Day, but we will have some hard and fast estimates, timetables, and outcomes for the projects that we're working on.
And then, just, just for clarification for the floor, that if there is a project that we pass tonight that doesn't fulfill the obligations in order to use those funds, that the council will be giving an amendment to the capital project once again? Or is that something, I wasn't, I wasn't a hundred percent familiar with, to reapprove the project?
Okay, so as it relates to the bonding authorizations, you're actually not approving the project, you're approving the use of life, okay? I will tell you that since the four years that I've been here, there have been some overages and underages all over the place, nothing radical. We do have the ability, after talking with bond council, if, say, we borrowed something for a fifteen year and we're gonna move it to another similar item for fifteen years, we can do that internally. I haven't seen that happen since I've been here, okay? Because that kind of violates the transparency issue. So if all of a sudden, just like with ARPA, we were gonna change to something radically different, we'd be coming back to you.
And if you do...
I mean, just for clarification purposes and for the floor, would you bring that to us? I mean, I don't see what, I don't see what the issue would be, you know what I mean? Just giving us an update on the project?
About a month ago, we came to and we moved around a hundred fifty thousand dollars to Stephen Swans. I mean, could we have written a check and you never known about it? Yeah, but that's not what we do. I mean, I'm not gonna do that as a CPA, I'm not gonna do it.
Right.
We're gonna bring it to you. We do have occasional, I will tell you, we do have occasional overages and underages. And so we try to move money around to cover those things, because these are estimates. I will tell you that, I guess, probably some good news, I mentioned it to Councilman Miola last week, we had budgeted for four snowplows. And the size of the snowplows that Dave needs, he had actually estimated for bigger snowplows, they need to be smaller. So we actually have enough money to buy another one. So we're gonna be buying five snowplows.
He downsized.
And then it almost brings us to a follow-up to date fleet, which is nice.
Yeah, I'm pretty excited about that.
And I just want to just reflect on the floor one more time. I appreciate the council people that went and visited the firehouse. I want to thank the chiefs and the police chief and Dave Short for actually bringing us through. I've seen it before, but I think that working together, we are able to accomplish them a little more, so it does help working together and I just want to appreciate you for all that you did towards that.
What's that saying?
I don't know, maybe more, no, I'm just...
All right, council members, the proposed ordinance number sixteen, the burden ordinance, is sponsored by full council. Any opposed? We'll move the piece from ordinance number sixteen out of pre-caucus committee and we'll discharge the one in committee. I think that's the last piece. Is there any other business, council members? Make a motion to take it easy till seven o'clock, huh?
Yeah, second.
Frank?
Frank.
At the regular meeting, today is April 6, 2022. And this meeting will come to order at 7:00 PM. Clerk, call the roll.
Ayello Burmaster, Friend Miola, Irvin Beatrice Williamson, Colasimo Testa, Debrango, nine present.
Okay, please rise. I'd like to leave you in the hall back under silence for deceased members of the council.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, on the ground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just after the reading of the minutes on the previous meeting.
Yes, I'd like to make that motion, please.
Motion by Councilman Friend, second by Councilwoman Miola. Okay, there are no public hearings tonight. Also, we don't have anybody signed up on the public comment period as well, so there'll be no speakers tonight as well. Okay. We have no common council guests. Are there any communications from the mayor?
This is a message from the mayor to the common council. I welcome Venice Irving to the Utica Common Council. Venice is a highly respected community leader and will be an asset to our city. A copy of the 2022 green waste pickup schedule was sent to all council members last week. The city hosted and provided winter activities for kids and families at the Vale By Ellis Ski Center during the months of February and March. This initiative was successful, given the turnout and positive feedback. As such, the city is looking to provide similar programming next year. Earlier this week, the city announced plans for the upcoming Memorial and Independence Day parades, as well as the annual fireworks celebration in F.T. Proctor Park. The administration has submitted a resolution which authorizes the city to renew its intermunicipal agreement with the Oneida County Herkimer Solid Waste Authority for a period of 10 years. More details and information can be found in the accompanying memo. The spike in inflation and increased cost of many basic household items could present a hurdle for residents to pursue the sidewalk reimbursement program. To make the reimbursement program more financially accessible, the administration is proposing legislation for the council's consideration that would increase the sidewalk reimbursement from the current rate of $4 per square foot to $8 per square foot.
Thank you. All right, our next order of business, our reports from the city officers. Chief Noon?
Nothing to report.
Corporation Council Stephanie DeGiorgio.
Nothing to report.
Lieutenant Ashley Berger, Utica Police. Commissioner Brian Thomas.
Nothing to report.
All right, very well. All right, are there any miscellaneous communications?
There are no miscellaneous communications tonight.
Okay. Petitions, remonstrances, and appeals. First District Councilmember Katie Ayello, you have the floor.
All right, thank you. Can you guys hear me? Is this one on? I have a couple thoughts tonight, and I went to the State of the Address for the county today. And there were a lot of great highlights that I heard that I'm really looking forward to and hearing more about their initiatives. But there were a couple comments we heard from our county executive that stood out, and I've been getting messages from people in our district all day. So I feel like I have no business sitting in the seat and representing the first ward if we don't address some concerns they have. And when he was going over the potential he sees for the U District and different areas he wants to help revitalize, he also called Utica and Back Square an urban hellscape and a disaster for visitors. And maybe those words were just nothing in the speech and meant nothing to them, but it meant a lot to our district. And we're very excited for their investment, and I go to these State of the Address, I go to county legislative meetings because I very much believe in working with the county to be successful and work together. So while we are excited for the investment from our Oneida County Executive, I invite him to come see what we see in Utica for a day. Follow me around. I'd love to show you the faces and the people who have been in Back Square for decades even, already investing everything they have into these parts of the city. So the potential that you do see is because of them. So I just wanted to call attention to that and thank the county also for the efforts that will be coming. We look forward to working together, but that was something I had to address, so thank you.
Thank you. Up next, Second District Councilmember Burmaster.
Thank you. I just want to address the, it's springtime, and I want to get everybody out cleaning the streets, cleaning the leaves up, getting ready to, you know, get into the summer months. The spring is always a dirty time of the year, and, you know, I ride through the neighborhood and it just needs to be picked up. Just pick up your garbage and take care of it. And I guess that's all I got to say tonight, but thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Third District Councilmember Celeste Brandt.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just piggybacking on that, I want everybody to remember that Saturday, April 23rd, is the Great American Cleanup, the Great Mohawk Valley Cleanup. There are going to be teams put together all over the city. You can go to the Oneida Herkimer Solid Waste Authority website to sign up, to register a team, et cetera. So that's going to be a great chance to, I hope that people will take Mr. Burmaster's advice and get out there and pick up some trash between now and then. But on that date, it's going to be a great time when people all across the city will be doing our best to clean things up. I also want to remind people tonight that the school board election is on Tuesday, May 17th, from noon till 9:00 PM. We have two open seats this year, six candidates. It's going to be a really important year. There are going to be two new people on the board at the end of this race. That's really important. I hope everybody keeps in mind that the city can only succeed when the schools succeed, and we need to, all of us, whether we have children or not, whether we have children in the schools or not, need to remember to vote on that day. And there are lots of forums going on around town. There was one in East Utica a couple nights ago. There's going to be one in West Utica next week. There's going to be one in South Utica and North Utica the week after that. I'm still hoping that the League of Women Voters will be moderating a debate in the, maybe in May, something like that. So lots and lots of opportunities to meet these candidates here, what they have to say, and I really hope that everybody will turn up and vote for the school board. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you. Up next is Fourth District Councilmember and Majority Leader Frank Miola.
Thank you very much, Councilman Protep Frankie Debrango. I'd just like to welcome Venice Irving, Councilman Venice Irving now. It was a trying time for the mayor. He went through several requests for the position. Of course, his appointment was the same appointment as the committee, and that is something that is very good. The Democratic Committee headed by, people probably know Freddie Hamilton, she also sat in this position, gave her blessing with her committee to endorse Venice Irving for the November special election. That's hard to find, both the administration and the Democratic Committee working in tangent with each other for one candidate, and that was something of a pleasure, and I wish him all the luck. All my colleagues here are here to help you. I know this is a learning curve for all of us. We always learn every day, and we're here for you. And congratulations for your new position, sir.
Thank you. Up next, Councilmember Venice Irving.
Thank you so much. First, I want to thank the City of Utica because the signs department really made me look good. I wasn't even in this position very long, and somebody asked me when I was out getting signatures, if they could have signs put up for the people to slow down because children were playing in the road, and they put the sign up in like three days. So when I went on that block again, they were, you know, very happy with me, so I'm starting off pretty good. So I thank them for that. The cleanup stuff, Cornerstone Church in our area already had people out picking up papers and stuff. I don't know how they're going to do it, but that's a big thing in every district, I think, right now, is trying to keep the community clean. So thank you for everybody, everybody's been so nice to me, and I hope you continue to be that because I'm going to learn from you guys, and I learned a lot today, how to run my mouth, so I'm going to be ready next time. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, Sixth District Councilmember Joseph Beatrice.
I have nothing tonight. Thank you.
Up next, Councilman-at-Large and Minority Leader Mark Williamson.
Mr. President, Protemp, whatever you had today. Venice, welcome aboard. It's like I said, welcome aboard, Venice. All right, there's a billionaire Air Force guy, right? So, Air Force, Army, Navy, whatever. All right, that's all I have.
All right, up next, Councilmember-at-Large Samantha Colasimo Testa.
Thank you, and welcome, Councilman for the Fifth District. I just want, I would be remiss if I didn't thank the police chief, fire chiefs, and DPW for the tour that they did. We got to tour all the firehouses and police facility and DPW garage, and it's really interesting. I mean, I was a councilperson for years, I've seen all of what they've done, but, I mean, even with the police department, the new technology and stuff like that, it's quite amazing that the work that each department actually does. So I just want to thank them. Brian Thomas, I'm going to be visiting your office next, I heard it's interesting, too. Just kidding with you. But that's it, I just wanted to say thanks.
All right, thank you. In the words of Austin Powers, "Allow myself to introduce myself." It's, I'm the Councilman-at-Large, Protemp Frank Debrango. I too, I got to agree with Councilman Burmaster and Councilperson Friend. Cleanup time, I mean, take pride in your, take pride in your property. I got a couple calls today, referred it to North Utica Councilperson, let them know what's going on, sent an email right away and right to the codes department, and they went over there to check a place out that was filled with trash and debris. So if you do have any complaints or you see anything, just call City Hall, call your councilperson, you know, we'll get on it right away, and we'll make sure that we at least get codes over there to check it out and try to get it cleaned up as soon as possible. And with that said, I just want to welcome Mr. Irving to the council. I'm sure we'll have many discussions in the future, but if you need anything, I'm sure everybody's here that will help you, and I will support you any way I can, so thank you. That is all I have. Okay. Okay, up next, we are going to present some legislation, and it's Resolution Number One, Board of Assessment Review. I believe we're going to put that in committee.
Mr. President, can I make a motion this, for tonight, to waive the Thursday rule for all future residential plans?
Second by Miola, yes.
And yes, I did.
Any motion to put that in committee?
We need second motion, second, refer to the.
Okay, in committee. Second, is Resolution Number Two. Commissioner of Deeds for Adita Rozick.
Motion to, for vote, Mr. President?
The clerk will read it, and then we'll vote.
It's a Commissioner of Deeds for a two-year term commencing April 6, 2022 to December 31st, 2022, for Adita Rozick. Your votes, please.
I got the, I don't have a switch.
Nine ees adopted.
You can give me the thumb, Frank, you don't have to do the whole hand.
Thumbs up? Okay, the next piece of legislation is Resolution Number Three, the sale of 804-806 John Street.
Motion to vote, Mr. President?
We're going to call.
This is to call for a public hearing for 804-806 John Street to Raul Santos for $500. Your votes, please.
Second. Okay. The last second.
Nine ees adopted.
Ordnance number four.
Motion to refer to committee, Mr. President.
Second.
Second, motion by Miola, second by Friend. Okay, next, call for a public hearing for 513 Bacon Street.
Motion to vote, Mr. President, and we need to clear the board.
Want to read it quick? For the sale.
Yep, this is a call for a public hearing for 513 Bacon Street from Duchan Boyd for $27,000.
Your votes.
Nine ees adopted.
Okay, one of refer to committee, 513 Bacon Street.
Motion to refer to committee, Mr. President.
Councilman Miola, second by Burmaster. Next up, public hearing for 956 Saratoga Street.
Motion to vote.
Clerk, read this legislation.
Yep, this is to call for a public hearing for 956 Saratoga Street to Carmen Trinidad for $1.
Your votes.
Nine ees adopted.
I have a motion to refer to committee.
Motion to refer to committee, Mr. President.
Ordnance approving. 956 Saratoga Street, second by Burmaster, Miola Burmaster. Okay, let's see. Up next, we have Resolution Number Nine, authorizing sale of wine and beer to American Legion Post 229.
Motion to vote, Mr. President?
Second.
Motion by Miola, second by Beatrice.
I'm going to read the legislation.
The sponsor is American Legion Post 229, Post 229 Summer Gala is the event, Saturday, August 6, 2022, from 4:00 PM to 10:00 PM. Location of the event is American Legion Post 229, 409 Herkimer Road, Utica, New York, 13502. Your votes.
Nine ees adopted.
Okay, next up, we have a proposed ordinance, number 10.
Motion to call for a vote.
No parking at all times and Rosemont Place.
Motion to call for a vote, Mr. President?
Motion by Miola, second by Beatrice.
Your vote.
This is ordained.
All right, ordained that Section 2-16360, scheduling, no parking at all times, to be amended, to include the following, Rosemont Place, north side between Mohawk and Clemention Street. Be it further ordained that the proper signage be erected where necessary. Your votes.
Nine ees adopted.
Okay, next up is Resolution Number 11 regarding marriage officer for Denise Gregory.
Motion to vote, Mr. President?
Motion by Miola, second by Ayello. Be resolved at pursuit to Chapter 49 of the laws of New York, 1988, the common council does hereby appoint the following persons as marriage officers for two years for the period of April 6, 2022 to December 31st, 2023. Denise Gregory, 651 James Street, Utica, New York. Be it further resolved that this resolution shall take effect immediately. Your votes.
Nine ees adopted.
Okay, next order of business, is we have ordinance number 12, sidewalk reimbursement. Do we have a motion to move it to the floor?
Second, Mr. President?
Motion by Celeste Brandt, second by Miola. Clerk.
This is for, sponsored by full council, is that correct, clerk?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Ordnance amending Section 2-23101 of the Utica City Code of Ordnance. Be it ordained that Section 223101 Code of Ordnance is hereby amended to read as follows. B, the reimbursement shall be $8 per square foot for reconstruction, deteriorated mainline sidewalk adjacent to the residential property for which the property owner or the owner or property owner's contractor has secured a permit from the Office of the City Engineer and for which the existing sidewalk has been duly inspected and designated by the city engineer as deteriorating, and for which the replaced sidewalk has been constructed in accordance with specifications on file in the Office of the City Engineer. Further ordained that this ordinance shall take effect immediately. Your votes, please. Nine ees adopted.
Okay, we've already removed the Thursday rule, and it's next piece, this ordinance, moratorium on the convenience stores.
We're on number 13, I thought.
My mistake. Okay. Extension between the City of Utica and the Solid Waste Authority.
Motion to vote, Mr. President?
Resolution Number 13. Resolution Number 13. Second.
Resolution approving extension agreement between the City of Utica and Oneida County and Herkimer Solid Waste Management Authority. Whereas the City of Utica and Oneida, Herkimer Solid Waste Management Authority entered into a solid waste collection and disposal agreement for a 25-year term expiring March 31st, 2021, and whereas the parties agreed to extend this agreement for an additional two-year period expiring March 31st, 2023, and whereas the parties agree that it is in the best interests of both parties and the citizens of the City of Utica to extend this agreement for an additional 10-year period. Be it resolved that the current agreement between the City of Utica and Oneida, Herkimer Solid Waste Management Authority is hereby extended for an additional period of 10 years up to and including March 31st, 2033, upon the terms and conditions substantially as set forth in the extension agreement attached heretofore. Be it further resolved, the mayor is hereby authorized to sign the extension agreement and any other documents necessary to implement this resolution on behalf of the City of Utica. Your votes, please. Nine yeas adopted.
Okay, now, proposed ordinance Number 14, remove the Thursday rule, which we already did, the moratorium on the convenience stores.
Motion to vote, Mr. President?
So, you can make a motion. Motion waive the Thursday rule.
We did it already.
Oh, I didn't know you could do ordinances by individual person.
Okay, Miola, second, Friend. Clerk.
An ordinance establishing a temporary moratorium on convenience stores and smoke shops in the City of Utica for not less than a six-month period that may be extended. Whereas the common council of the City of Utica did on November 4th, 2020, and February 3rd, 2021, adopt new legislation designed to regulate what is referred to as convenience stores and smoke shops and their location in the City of Utica. And whereas, since the adoption of the new zoning law in February 3rd, 2021, new questions have arisen with regard to terms and application of these two entities. And whereas, it has been determined by members of the common council that these new ordinances require further study and possible revision that necessitates that a moratorium be enacted that would halt the approval of such entities for a period of time to allow for a study to be conducted. Now, whereas the common council did impose a moratorium as set forth herein for a period of six months, which has expired, and whereas the council does hereby extend the moratorium for an additional six months from the date of adoption herein. It's be it ordained that the Commissioner of Urban and Economic Development, the Planning Board, and the Zoning Board of Appeals not issue any permission for the development and establishments of any new convenience stores and/or smoke shops for a period of not less than six months from the effective date of this ordinance, and they recognize that there is a moratorium on such approval for not less than six months following the effective date of this ordinance. Such moratorium may be extended if such study has not been completed by the end of the six-month period. Your votes, please.
Twenty-five, thank you.
Nine yeas adopted.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Next up, next order of business.
I would like to, before we vote on the next piece of legislation, we need to rescind the legislation that's dated March 18th, 2022, concerning the seeker for the capital projects. I'd like to make a motion to rescind.
Can I have a second? Friend, Councilwoman Friend.
We call for a vote?
Let's call for a vote. This is to rescind the bonding ordinance authorizing issuance of 5,415,000 serial bonds of the City of Utica, Oneida County, New York.
Dated March 18th, correct. March 18th, 2022, I got it right here. Is the secret one, yep. Everybody got a copy of it from our clerk?
Your votes.
Nine yeas to rescind.
There's another piece to this.
Mr. President, I'd like to call for a vote, Resolution Number Five.
Resolution Number Five.
Fifteen, I'm sorry.
Yep. That's the same thing, bonding ordinance authorizing the issuance of serial bonds. Clerk, I have a motion, bring it to the floor, do I have a second? Ayello, go ahead, clerk.
Resolution determining that action to undertake certain projects will not have a significant effect on the environment. Whereas the City of Utica, Oneida County, New York, is considering undertaking certain projects described on Exhibit A to this resolution. Whereas the pursuant to Article Eight of the Environmental Conservation Law is amended, the Seeker Act and the regulations adopted pursuant thereto by the Department of Environmental Conservation of the State of New York, the common council desires to comply with the Seeker Act and the regulations with respect to each of the projects. Now therefore be it resolved by the City of Utica Common Council as follows. Would you like me to read all of that?
No.
Okay.
You put this on E code anyways, right? That's all we need.
Yes, yes.
All right, your votes.
Nine yeas adopted.
Okay, next order of business is ordinance 16. This is an ordinance, we're gonna need full counsel on this, regarding a bond ordinance authorizing issuance of five, being $5,515,000 serial bonds, City of Utica, Oneida County, New York, to finance the costs of various capital projects throughout the city.
Motion to vote, Mr. President?
Motion by Miola.
Follow by my vote, please, when you're ready.
I need a second. Second, Ayello.
So, I'm gonna vote for this tonight, I think it's a good bonding ordinance. I continue to be frustrated with the city not being willing to bond for electric vehicles. We're bonding for gas vehicles in this. I have been assured by the mayor that he will buy at least two fully electric vehicles with funds other than capital plan funds. I think that's good. I mean, I've said much of this before on this floor, I'll say it again quickly. There's more than enough reason for us to be buying electric vehicles for our fleet. By 2035, in the state of New York, you will not be able to buy a new passenger vehicle in the state of New York, per law. So, we're sort of headed towards this future that I think we would be well ahead to sort of get started on being prepared for. Also, and I've been advocating for this for three years, now we're at the point where gas, I filled up yesterday my little old 2019 Subaru Outback, and it cost me $70 to fill my tank, and gas prices have come down a little bit. Last time I filled, it cost me 75. So, gas prices are way up, they've come down a little, they're never gonna come down very much, and we all really have to get used to the idea that gas prices are not going to come down. So, you know, with the taxpayers' money, we're gonna be spending a lot to buy gas when we could spend like 10% as much to charge batteries. To fully charge a Tesla battery costs $8. So, that's one reason, I just think in terms of, you know, fiscal responsibility, electric is far, far more fiscally responsible. I also just recently read an article, the American Lung Association predicts that by 2050, if we, if we begin electrifying our fleet now, by 2050, we will save 100,000 lives of people who die from various lung diseases because of car exhaust. So, which I think is something we don't hear a lot about, the idea that people with various kinds of lung diseases, such as asthma, et cetera, all those are exacerbated by internal combustion engines and the exhaust they produce. And then, of course, lastly, climate change, we simply have to begin electrifying virtually everything. Albany has also now passed a law that says, I don't know what the date is, maybe 2040, all new construction in the state of New York will have to be, all heat will have to be electric. You will not be able to install a gas furnace in your house in the future. We're all moving towards discontinuing the use of fossil fuels, and I wish the City of Utica would move towards that a little bit faster. That said, I'm pleased that we're gonna buy two electric vehicles with non-capital fund funds, and I appreciate that the mayor was willing to, to make that agreement. So, I am gonna vote for this bonding ordinance tonight, but again, we're kicking the can down the road. Electricity is coming, people, and electric cars are, I had three volunteer show at my house recently, and all of them were driving electric cars, and that was just a coincidence. So, we all need to get on board with that, that's all I've got. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you. I'm gonna hold off a few minutes, I gotta wait for Councilperson Colasimo who left the room, but I'll go over a few of these while, while we're waiting. Department of Public Works, two mad back street and sidewalk sweepers, 150,000. Fire Department, building reconstruction, Station One, Station Four, and Station Seven. Engineering, traffic signals, electric subway manhole renovations, specific objects and or purposes. Police Department, small transport bus, five utility, five police utility interceptors. Parks Department, two F-350 four-by-four dump trucks with a plow, a mobile ban shell, claw truck, long low field, and complete the bleachers and the concrete pad on the visitor's side. Facilities, parking garage renovation, City Hall, Washington Street, parking garage truck with plow and salter, a parking garage sweeper, a parking garage tractor, and Hannah Park renovation, so it can be all beautiful out in front here when we get done with this bond ordinance. So, I'll call for the votes.
Mr. President, may I qualify? I just want to add some more information for this. As everybody know, this is a bond ordinance, and I took the liberty of checking with our Budget Director. Our relief, our relief on bond payments is 5,901,908. Our debt, of course, is 5,515,000, so we are relieving our debt payment of around 385,000. So, we're not paying as much, okay? And that steps in the right direction to clean up our finances. So, I'd like to give kudos to the mayor's office and our Budget Director for keeping the debts low this year. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you. Your votes. Okay, next, order of business. I believe it's ordinance Number Nine, shooting ranges, which may be Number 17 here, but it was proposed ordinance Number Nine on 22822.
I'd like to make a motion for this from committee, please.
Second, Mr. President?
Second, motion by Friend, second by Miola.
And I'll be making these one by one. So first, in the first whereas paragraph, it currently says, whereas there is presently no legislation regulation of the establishment, I just wanted to read, whereas there is presently no legislation regulating the establishment. That's my first amendment.
Motion to second, Mr. President, for the amendment?
Yes, second, your votes on the first amendment.
Oh, baby.
One at a time.
All right, yes, boss.
Five yeas adopted, on the amendment.
I've already got six.
Oh, six, I'm sorry. Get in.
I don't have the switch. Okay, amendment Number Two.
So, my second, my second amendment is, I'm still on the first page, under the firearm, it currently reads a handgun, rifle, shotgun, or airgun, and I would like to amend it to read a handgun, rifle, or shotgun, and simply remove the airgun. So, we will read a handgun, rifle, or shotgun with the latter three, we'll clear it all back, love you guys.
Second for the amendment, Councilman DeBrango?
Second by Miola. Your votes on the second amendment to change handgun, rifle, or shotgun with the latter three as they are defined in 265 of the New York State Penal Code.
Six yeas on the amendment.
You have six eight or five eight?
Well, he's six.
He's number six.
Okay.
Okay, number three, amendment Number Three.
Third, very quick, I just want to remove paragraph B under Section 21761, that's at the top of the second page, we're just gonna strike the entire paragraph there.
And in the, in the title, too. Special permit.
Yes.
Right, right, so it'll, thank you, so do I need to do that in separate, in separate orders?
No, you can remove the special permit in the whole section.
Okay, so we're gonna take out and special permit at 21761, we're gonna take out and special permit, and then we're gonna strike the entirety of paragraph B. Correspondence, counsel, is that right? Yeah, thank you.
Second on the amendment, Councilman DeBrango?
Okay, second by Miola. Your votes on amendment Number Three.
Six yeas amended.
And then my fourth amendment is, paragraph, same page, second page, paragraph E under 21763, I wanna strike paragraph E, this is as a recommendation of the chief, of police, Martin Williams, want to strike that paragraph, and then that will require, do I need to do anything about that, or do I have to renumber the paragraph?
No.
Okay, so I'm making a motion to strike paragraph E under 21763.
Okay, motion to strike paragraph.
Second for the amendment, Mr. President?
From Friend, second by Miola. Your votes.
Forget that.
Six yeas amended.
And I have just one more amendment, under 21766, paragraph F.
Yep.
Where it says Municipal Codes Violation Bureau should read Department of Codes. Did you see where I am?
Motion second on the amendment, Mr. President?
Motion by Friend, second on the amendment. Miola, we're eliminating municipal code violation bureau and replacing it with Department?
Correct, Department of Codes. Thank you.
Okay, your votes?
Six yeas amended.
Thank you, that's all I amendments, thank you very much.
Okay, now we have to vote on the full, the full ordinance.
I'd like to call for a vote, please, Mr. President?
Second, Mr. President, on the complete legislation as amended.
Introduced by Councilwoman Friend, second by Miola, we are calling for a vote.
The only question that I have is for Brian Thomas. Brian, have you seen this legislation before as it relates to the code?
I, I've got it briefly, but it's not part of the zoning code, so I didn't really.
But it's gonna relate to the zoning code? I mean, this is what we're saying, the.
I don't think so.
So then how can't we pass legislation for the, if you're saying that that has to be in the zoning code, why wouldn't this have to be in the zoning code?
This is not in the zoning code.
Right, I know that, so what I'm asking you is how come the convenience store legislation wouldn't have to be in the zoning?
Because it's presently in the zoning code.
I'm sorry, so then why aren't we following that legislation, why aren't we following that then?
What do you mean?
If it's already in there, then why aren't we following it? I'm confused.
Just, just by putting a moratorium on it.
Right, but also prior to that, the reason was, was because convenience stores were popping up, and that's why they put a moratorium, so why wouldn't they follow the actual zoning, why wouldn't they follow the old city code and not the zoning code? Like, what would be the difference between this? Because I'm, I gotta clarify this before I vote on this, because this is part of the reason that I'm not voting for it, on top of the other reasons that are inside the legislation, but for one instance, you're telling me that the convenience store legislation would have to be in the zoning code, right?
It already is.
Even though, but the regulations that we wanna put onto it wouldn't be in a separate city code. So, you already said that this, the regulations for this were already in the zoning code, right? You said it was in the amusement, but listen to me, listen, if somebody were to put a shooting range right here, right now, okay, they would still have to follow regulations with OSHA, so on and so forth, building codes, right? This just goes into way more detail on what is regulated for a convenience store. So, what difference would it be if we put in the zoning, if we put in the regular code or charter that we wanna regulate a convenience store? What would separate this legislation from that? Why wouldn't this go in the zoning code? Then why wouldn't we put a, then listen to me, why wouldn't we put a resolution, resolution to, wait, Frank, I've gotta ask a question, why wouldn't we put a resolution to the zoning code?
If you want to answer, you can, if not, we're gonna vote on it, and if you want to vote no, you vote no, and we'll put it in the committee with discussion.
No, I am, but I need, I want clarification, that's not how this works. I want clarification to why this specific piece wouldn't have a resolution going to the zoning code, to have them put it on, but it.
She just stated it's not included in the zoning code.
Hold on one second.
That would be, that would be separate from us, that we would have to do the same.
Councilperson Colasimo-Cutesto, we're gonna have the judge say a few words on this, go ahead, Judge.
When this was proposed, I've. When this was proposed, I made it clear to the councilperson Friend that we shouldn't keep amending the zoning code willy-nilly. We have code ordinances and firearms are already in the code of ordinances. So what I did is I went to the code of ordinances and put this there because it said, I didn't believe had to go in the zoning court, in the zoning code. I put it there. That was a councilperson Friend's choice, I put it there, and I talked to Mr. Giorgio, and I says, you know, every councilman you were coming up, we're constantly amending the zoning ordinance, that has to go to all these different stages for approval, and I think of the zoning ordinance as being one document separated from other documents. And you're right, Councilman, that there are things we can put in the court of ordinances, there are some things we can't because some things are already in the court of ordinances. The things that we were, the other things we were talking about are in the court of ordinances, and we have to straighten that out, such as the convenience stores and all that, it has to stay there. And so, that is the reason why this is an ordinance, because you, we do have a code of ordinances, and this, and we already had a provision in there about firearms, I just added a brand-new one, and yes, it is long because it was referenced in other cities, and sometimes this is a little more restrictive, but we were thinking that, I was thinking, having a range in a city is a little different than having it in a town with Deerfield, there is a difference, and, and the two cities, other than us, there might be more, who did this, I think it was Kingston and Buffalo.
Kingston and Rochester.
Pardon, Rochester, yeah, and they, there was complaint about the supervision, while I think in the city, it's a little different than being out in the country. Anyway, that's the way I did it, and of course, anything I do is subject to your amendments and that, but I wanted to explain that to you because you did raise a good point. I'm the one who told the council friend I would do, just like, if you asked me to do something, I find a place for it, must have numbers, and must be able to find it, and that's why I did it, so that's criticism, I'll take the bite, thank you.
Okay, satisfied? All right, all right, let's vote on this sub-piece. This is an ordinance adding a new article four to chapter two one seven, this is entitled Article Four Firearms Shooting Ranges. It's been amended, we're gonna vote.
We have one more piece of resolution.
Yeah, we have no more, we have something in committee.
Yep. He's yea, six yeas. Yep, we have the resolution for honoring Patricia Jean Zajak.
Okay, Miola makes a motion to take out a committee, resolution number two in honor of Petra, Patricia Jean Zajak, have a second for Burmaster? Does anybody wanna read it?
There is being amended these four.
Okay, you wanna make an amendment to it?
I can make an amendment.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
I'm gonna read into the record the amended, okay. So, in.
He's making a motion to amend it, second by Ayello. You're gonna read it first, and then you're gonna make, read it with the amended.
I'm just gonna read the amended.
With the amended, okay.
Yep, so in the fifth whereas, it's gonna state, whereas not only will the citizens of West Utica have lost a dedicated advocate, but she leaves her daughter Mary, who served in the U.S. Air Force, her sister Marcella Purpchnowitz, and husband Wayne of North Carolina, and her sister-in-law Virginia Zajak. Along with her brother John, who is deceased, she also leaves many cousins and nephews. We need to clear the board for the vote, clerk.
I'll call for a vote. This will be full counsel?
Nineties adopted.
Is there anything else in committee that has to be removed?
I would like to make a motion to discharge ordinance number five, the old bond ordinance from three sixteen, 2022.
Second, Mr. President.
Motion by Friend, second, Miola. Your votes to discharge? It's been discharged.
And then I would like to make a motion to adjourn, please. Second, Mr. President.
Second, motion by Friend, second by Miola. Good night, thank you all for coming, thank you.